I know nobody wants to do it over the holidays because things that could go wrong.
It would be some threats.
Right, absolutely. It behooves us to like, yeah, like.
Yes.
This? Okay. It's very meshy.
It's not as meshy as you think.
It's almost like you can see your face. It's kind of creepy, like your lips moving, but you're like, it's kind of Darth Vader-y.
You're going to give me, you're going to Chris Rock.
So it goes over, so when you take off. I call this meeting of the Red Oak Independent School District to order at 7:00 PM. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. All board members are present with the exception of Dr. Shaw and John Anderson. So Mr. Knott, would you give our invocation?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we just thank you again for another night where we can come together, Father, as a warden, as a father altogether, you know, as a staff, students. Everyone is on our mind, Father. Just watch over us as we go through this COVID, Father. Father, we know we're having some reactions against some things here that we have those who are testing positive. I ask that you be with them, Father, and help them and get over with this. We thank you for just your wisdom and your knowledge. Father, just ask that you share that with us like you always do, Father. Let us make the right decisions that's best for this district and best for our children and our stu- staff, our teachers, Father, all together as one, as we unite, Father. Father, we thank you for everything. We thank you for hearing us, our Lord Jesus. Amen.
Mr. Sebring, will you do the pledges?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, first tonight, we will have the superintendent's report. So Ms. Stanford.
Okay, we're going to get started, first of all, under my report with a Red Oak ISD Gifted and Talented Program Handbook Update. And our presenter is Lynn Dockery, but I believe that our Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, Scott Rogers, would like to speak quickly first.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, good evening, everyone. I come here tonight before Lynn comes up and Lisa Minton will also be part of a presentation, but I just wanted to wish the school board members in our community a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays. And I wanted to brag about the curriculum instruction staff that have worked on two reports that you're going to get this evening. One will be the GT Handbook Update and the other one will be the House Bill III CCMR and Early Childhood Goals. They've worked with the principals, they've worked with each other within the department to get feedback in order to put these goals together. We're in a totally new situation with these goals and so we have to find a starting point. And the collaboration has led the goals to reflect the talents of the HAWK and will challenge all of our leadership, teachers, instructional staff, and students to excel. So appreciate you this evening and look forward to their presentations. Next will be Lynn, who will go over the GT Handbook Updates. Thank you.
Good evening. Before I begin, I would like to introduce two people who work in the CNI Department who have had a huge piece in us just the evaluation of our program and what that looks like. Rachel Little, who is a program coordinator of ELAR and Social Studies and GT at the secondary level. And then Lakisha Bass, who is our program coordinator for math and science at the elementary school level and GT. So she's over GT Elementary School. And without both of them and their expertise in Region 10 as well, we wouldn't even have begun to crack what we need to crack open for evaluating our programs. So the first thing I wanted to do in looking at our GT program, the first thing I wanted to do with you guys is just review some statistics with you within our GT program here in Red Oak ISD. So we do in Red Oak ISD have about 7% of our total population that's in GT. That's kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade. Red Oak Elementary School has 30 students. Wooden has 43 students. Eastridge has 21 students. Shields has 21 students. Shutman has 25 students. Our middle school has 122 students. And then the high school has 158 students. Along with those numbers, we have about 53% of our total students that are female. We have 47% of our students that are male. And then we also broke down our data into student groups. So when you look at our student groups, and this is total throughout the district, we have 22 Hispanic students in GT. We have 5% American Indian in GT. 2% Asian students. 12% Black students. 59% White students. So that just kind of gives you an overview, just to kind of think about before I get started and some of the things that I'm going to talk to you about. So I'm going to give you just another general overview of our program. We're going to discuss the changes that we've put in place already this year and then we will go into some of the things that we're looking at doing in the future just to keep you updated with what we're thinking as far as our GT program goes. So students are tested in elementary school and they stay in GT until they graduate. Elementary school GT is a pull-out program at each one of the campuses. They get pulled out for 45 minutes daily, so each grade level gets pulled, each grade level who has qualifying students, those students get pulled out during talent time, which is 45 minutes daily, and they get GT instruction. At the middle school and high school, our students are serviced in pre-AP, AP classes. So they are mixed in with our pre-AP, AP students and the teachers are differentiating the work for the GT students that are in those classrooms. All of our GT teachers at the elementary school are GT certified. All of our teachers in the secondary who teach GT students have gotten 30 hours of GT training and then they have to update that every year with six extra hours of training so that they can learn any updates, learn anything new that's happening in the GT world. At the elementary school campuses, we do have one GT teacher per campus. And then it's, it's within each grade level in the secondary as to what teachers are teaching AP, pre-AP, and then they also have the GT students in their classroom. So then going on into what we have changed for this year, one of the things that we have added to our program is a qualitative data system and it's called the SIGGS. It scales for identifying gifted students. And really what it is, is it's a quite significant rating scale that teachers give and parents even give the scale to take a look at each content area, our seven different areas where kids can qualify. And those seven different areas where we look at whether a student is GT or not is general intellectual ability. We look at language arts, we look at math, science, social studies, creativity, and leadership. So within this rating scale, teachers will rate the students, the ones that they feel like are going to qualify. They kind of have a scale within the classroom that they look at. They fill out this rating scale and we look at that for qualification as well as the qualitative data that we're using, which is the COGAT. So we used the COGAT last year, we're using the updated version this year. So Ms. Bass was the one that did a lot of the research on what that looks like and training our teachers in the COGAT testing piece. So the COGAT is a multiple choice K through 12 assessment that measures reasoning skills with different types of verbal quantitative and non-verbal questions. It's a group-administered aptitude test and it's given as an entrance into most, most GT programs. The next thing, so those are two things that we've added this year that are new. The other thing that we've added that you do have in your packet is the testing window. So what I do want to review, you can, you can look at that as I kind of speak about what that looks like. So in the past, our GT teachers at the elementary school level have been using every Friday to test students. So every Friday out of the school year, that was their day to take and test any students that had been referred to the program or were new to the program. Our concern when we first started looking at this and moving forward was that if there were no students to be tested on a Friday, then none of our GT students got seen for instruction. Those GT teachers ended up using that day as a planning day for them. So that was one of the things that we really wanted to look at and how that impacted our students in the program. So to increase the amount of days in which our GT students do get instruction, we created this particular testing window schedule. This allows the GT teachers to test in bulk instead of just testing a couple of students. This allows the GT teachers to test in bulk instead of just testing a couple of students at a time or none at all on a Friday. So in essence, our goal was to move towards the testing window to increase instructional time. So to put it in perspective, I'm going to give you a perspective of our first semester. We had 14 Fridays this first semester. On average, when we did our first testing window, we looked at, on average, at the elementary schools, how many days the teachers took to actually test students. And on average, that was five days. So on average, with the new testing window schedule, with five days, they were able to test all the GT students, whether they were new to the district, whether they were coming into Red Oak as a new student. And so we gained some days when you look at five days versus 14 days. When you look forward into next semester, we have 18 Fridays in the second semester. So if this trend continues, we'll have gained back 17 days for instruction in GT at the elementary school level, which is three weeks and two days. So that's one of the reasons why we wanted to go to the window, and then we wanted to monitor it to make sure that we were getting what our intention was to get. So if you look in your packet at the new testing window, you'll see how we have a window at the beginning of the year. We also have a window at the semester, because that's when we start referring our kindergarten students into the GT program. We give them a semester to get acclimated to being in kindergarten, and then our teachers start referring kids for the kindergarten GT program. And then we will also have an end-of-the-year referral window for any students who are, might have come new to Red Oak or might be referred, they needed some time to develop for the year and needed to be referred again for the next school year. So I'll give you a chance to look at that. And a lot of this is really just giving, disseminating out checklists. It's beginning the Phase One screening, which is that the SIGGS process, the checklist that the teachers and the parents get, because that takes time to get those checklists from our parents. And they're pretty lengthy, so it takes a while for our teachers to do those as well. So that's part of Phase One that overlaps with Phase Two, that is the actual going into the COGAT testing. Then we also have, once those students get the student checklist back and we get the COGAT testing, our GT teachers look at all the percentiles for that, and then we sit with a committee, and it is usually an administrator, the GT teacher, and another administrator or counselor who's also had the 30 hours of GT training. And then they make decisions based on the data as to which kids qualify for the GT program. So that will happen three times a year, each year. Do you guys have any questions on the testing windows?
Just one question is, when we have a child that moves into our area that comes from another district, this, he was GT or she was GT there, is there any reference from that district to us in regards to them being a GT? Or are they just, when they get here, they say, hey, I'm in a GT program? So is there any communication?
Yes, great question. All of that information comes, if they are in a district in Texas where they have qualified for a GT program, all of that comes to our, through our PMS, through the TREC system that is created in Texas. And so what we will do is, we will look at that paperwork. One of the things that we're looking at doing, because I think right now we accept any student who's been in a GT program. As long as we see the paperwork and we know they've been accepted, they've been accepted in another district in the GT program, they're accepted. One of the things that we're looking at right now is we're looking at how the testing was done in another district and how it compares to our expectations as Red Oak ISD. So if we feel like we need to retest them with the SIGGS and the COGAT, then we are able to do that. We're able to take those students in and say, yes, you qualified in this particular district, but you also have to qualify in our district as well, because standards can be different from district to district and what that looks like.
Okay, you answered my second part, so thank you.
Good, thank you. Good question. All right, so then where are we going? So I just wanted to give you an update on where we're going and some of the things that we're thinking about. We're still researching a lot of things and taking a lot of things into consideration. So as you heard, within the statistics of GT with the student groups, one of the things that we're looking at doing is decreasing the disparity within our student groups and our student populations with our student groups who qualify for GT. This is something that a lot of other districts around the state are also trying to problem solve. It's a really hot topic, and Rachel and Lakeisha and I went through the Texas Association of Gifted and Talented Conference virtually, and a lot of those sessions were on the disparity within student groups throughout the whole entire state. So one of the things that we wrestle with is making sure that we're meeting, under the Texas State Plan, that our program reflects our student population while at the same time keeping integrity to a GT program. So that's one of the things that we're looking at. We're also looking at doing a GT reevaluation on our fifth-grade students, so that once they become fifth graders, at the end of their fifth-grade year, they get reevaluated again for the GT program at the secondary level. This SIGGS, this Scales for Identifying Gifted Students, does a, will, we hope, is going to do a really good job of differentiating our students, where we can track their strengths. Because that way, what we can do is lead them into, if they're really strong in ELAR, we can really guide them towards GT and ELAR. Doesn't mean they can't take GT and math. It just means they know where their strengths are, and they can develop their strengths a little bit better that way. Because we sometimes see that GT students might be GT in ELAR. They don't do so good in math, or they might be really good in math and science, but they struggle with the ELAR part. So that's one of the things that we're considering and we're looking at. We're researching and considering different criteria for qualifying students to GT to better align with what is generally accepted, meaning the percentiles. So we're looking at that. We're talking to Region 10, looking at what that is regionally and just seeing how we compare. We're researching GT curriculum and instructional practices within GT, and we're doing that kindergarten all the way up through 12, because we really want to make sure that our GT students who are in our pre-AP, AP classes are getting some differentiation within those classrooms and that our teachers are able to do that and they have the resources to do that. And then lastly, we're really, we've been working with Region 10 to provide, to get their expertise, and we have them as a resource so they can answer any questions that we have, because they see a lot of programs all throughout Texas. And so we're really working with them to make sure that we are up to date with everything that we're doing within our program. And then as we move forward with any of these changes, we're always going to keep you updated with what we're doing. So, any questions? Okay, well, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very good information, very good information. And I know that was a lot of work. I appreciate y'all putting all that together. That's great. Okay, I'm going to continue on with the superintendent's report and just give you some other information that we've got going on in the district. Of course, we all know we have another change of instructional setting. At the end of every six weeks, we allow an opportunity for students to, parents to choose whether their students are going to be virtual or in-person, so added to our already current numbers. When we come back from a semester, we will have an additional 32 in-person that will go to virtual and 127 that will return to school from at-home. So our numbers do continue to go up on those students that are coming back to school, and I will get you a complete number once we finish that process and get everything changed over on that. Earlier today, right before the meeting, we're trying to reduce our numbers, so we did recognize our Christmas card winners that the board chose the Christmas card winner, so we did recognize those. I'd like to go ahead, now that everyone's here, and just kind of tell you about who those students were and the actual winner. And I know you've seen the card already. It's been circulating. It's a pretty amazing card, and the board did actually view those and choose those winners. We had five finalists. This was the elementary school this year that was doing this. We had Morris Bustamante at Eastridge, Sydney Nguyen at Shutman, Allison Balthazar in Wooden, Hope Samuels at Shutman, and Ella Ann Prazier at Eastridge. And then our winner that's on the front of the card is Isabella Platt from Red Oak Elementary, fifth grader. So it's a pretty phenomenal Christmas card that is made up with those students. And I believe that this is the 13th year that Red Oak has done that, so I love that tradition. I think that's great. Wanted to also just talk a little bit about some other highlights of some of our students. I know that y'all are like me, and y'all miss getting to see their faces at these meetings, and I know they probably miss getting to come and be recognized, but we never want to go without recognizing those students. So just to let you know that we do have five Red Oak High School senior or student athletes that signed a national letter of intent to continue to play their sport at the collegiate level in girls' basketball. We had Anaya Johnson going to the University of North Texas. Softball, Michaela Kelly at Vernon College. Softball, Brianna Evans, Oklahoma State University. Volleyball, Brooke and Megan O'Neal, East Texas Baptist University. And actually, day after tomorrow, this Wednesday, at 1:00 PM in the Red Oak High School competition gym, we're going to have the following football players who are going to sign a national letter of intent. We have Darius Jackson at the University of Missouri, Raymond Gay at Oklahoma State University, John Mathis at Sam Houston State University, Devonstein at University of Central Arkansas, and Jackson Bailey at the University of Arizona. That's pretty impressive to have that many student athletes that are going to be signing those letters of intent. We also had a Red Oak High School senior, Danae Swanson, was selected as part of the Texas Thespians Virtual All-State Performance Cast, and she joins an elite cast of under 50 students from across the state. That's pretty impressive. It's all-size schools across Texas, and Danae is featured prominently in the video link, and we do have that on our Red Oak ISD website if anyone wants to go on there, and you can click the link to see her all-state performance. We also had, sadly, you know, we had to call our volleyball short, and we would have made those playoffs, but we had to call that short due to some contact tracing and some COVID. But I did want to recognize our all-district awards on our team. On First Team, we had Megan O'Neal. She's a senior, middle blocker. On First Team, we had Mackenzie Taplin. She's a junior setter. Second Team, we had Brooke O'Neal. She's a senior, middle blocker. Second Team, Alana Guerrero was a sophomore, and she is a setter. Honorable mention, we have Mazana McKeller. She's a junior. And Skylar Reynolds, who is also a junior. Those were both honorable mention. Academic All-District, these are the ones I really love. I mean, these are the kids that are not only performing out on the courts and on the fields, but they're also performing in the classroom, so that's quite an honor too. Academic All-District, we had Jaylee Feeley, Tori Fowler, Alana Guerrero, Victoria Harvey, Alyssa Lopez, Mazana McKeller, Skylar Reynolds, and Carly Rushing. That's quite a lineup of those, so congratulations to all of those. As you know, we're continuing with our playoffs with our football, our Red Oak Hawk football team, and we will be playing El Paso, Del Valle this Friday at 2:00 PM. It's going to be at Big Spring High School. It's going to be quite a trek across there, but I know it's going to be a great game, so we're looking forward to that. And then one last thing, and then I'll close up my superintendent's report. Just to let you know, we're still, you know, doing all of the COVID and the contact tracing, and every day we update our, every school day, we update our dashboard. And currently, what we have as far as the number of active cases, out of 863 staff, we have 14 active cases, and out of 5,978 students, we have 45 active cases. So we're still keeping those numbers percentage-wise low. Any questions about any of that? No? Okay, well, that completes my report.
Thank you. Did we have anybody sign up? Okay, we have nobody for open forum, so we will move to our action items. And first, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items in there that any board members want to take off to discuss? Okay, then I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm going to press the consent agenda is presented.
Second motion.
Okay. And... That is motion passed. Oh, I am so sorry. We need to vote, don't we? See, I knew y'all'd get a laugh before this meeting was over. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'm good to go, right? Oh, motion carries 5-0. Next, we have consideration and approval of House Bill Three goals. And our presenter will be Ms. Lynn Dockery again.
Good evening again. Thank you. All right, so let me see if I can go ahead and click to our first slide. There we go. Okay, so one of the things that came out of this last legislative session was what we like to refer to as House Bill Three. It's probably not the first time you guys have heard about things that we've discussed with House Bill Three. One of those things that we were tasked to do by the state is create goals that fulfilled the 60 by 30 Texas goal. I mean, you'll see that on this slide. So the 60 by 30 Texas goal is a goal that the state set where 60% of students in Texas will meet the following goals by 2030, which means that we will have 60% of our third-grade students, and I'm going to go into this in detail, that 60% of our third-grade students will meet standard on the STAR test in literacy, and they'll meet, 60% will meet the standard in math. And then we also have a CCMR goal as well. So 60% of our students will have post-secondary credential or degree by 2030. So we were tasked with setting goals in these three areas, and this is our presentation on how that's going to happen and the goals that we have set for Red Oak. So if you look at this particular slide, you'll see it says there's two checkpoints along the way. To make sure that 60% of our students hit post-secondary credential or degree by 2030, we have to start at the beginning, right? And so that's a vertical piece. So the state also said that 60% of our third-grade students will meet in math and in literacy. They'll meet standards. So those are the two checkpoints that they start with in third grade, because third grade is where we begin taking the STAR. So if you... I'm sure that you guys have gone through our accountability system, but I just want to remind you what that means. So within our accountability system, our students receive performance levels when they take the STAR. And the performance levels are, they did not meet, which means they didn't meet the standard that was set. They either approach that standard, they meet that standard, or they master that content at that grade level standard. So when you look at approaches and you look at meets and you look at masters, all three of those performance ratings mean that our students passed the STAR test. But it also gives us a real clear picture on what kinds of interventions they need. So a student who approaches might need quite a bit of intensive intervention as they go into the next grade level. A student who gets a performance level of meets might need just a little bit of intervention. And then, of course, our master students are ready for the next grade level. So when we talk about... So when we talk about 60% of our students meeting that performance goal, that means that they're going past approaches and they're hitting that performance goal of meets. Let me go ahead and go to the next slide. So that's third grade, 60% meets at math, 60% meets at literacy. And then 60% of all our high school graduating students graduating with post-secondary credential or a degree, or degree. So I'm going to move on to the next slide. So what is required of us when we did our House Bill goals? We had to set annual goals for aggregate student growth on third grade math and reading STAR. We did this as a district with our district data. And we did this as individual campus with our campus data. So we not only looked at it as a district, we looked at it with our campuses too, where they actually set the same goals that match what the district expectation is. Another requirement was annual targets for students in each student group were to be evaluated in the closing the gaps domain. So we also had to look at each one of our student groups because not only do we have to get all of our students to that 60%, the state expectation is that we get each one of our sub-student groups to that 60%. We had to give what kind of targeted professional development for classroom teachers in kindergarten through third grade that we were going to give at the campuses because we also know that third grade teachers don't just work our kids to get 60% of meets. That takes our pre-K through second grade teachers as well, giving strong instruction. We also had to set annual targets that, that set for bilingual and ESL. So we, we do have in our literacy data that you'll see in a bit, we added our bilingual students as well. And we set targets for our students on our bilingual campuses. So the district's plan is reflected in the district improvement plan. So, so we were also required to have a plan on how we were going to get there. That's reflected with our district goals is in our district plan. And how the campus is going to get those, to those particular goals is reflected in the campus plans. And that is all aligned. So in CCMR, which is the college career and military readiness plans, they, they were required to include this, almost the same thing. So annual goals for aggregate student growth on CCMR readiness indicators evaluated under the student achievement domain. And they were to add annual targets for students in each group in the closing the gaps domain, same as our early childhood literacy and math. And then not only did we have to set goals, but we also had to look at progress monitoring. So we were tasked with looking at what our data, baseline data was. And then we were tasked to look at a five-year plan and set goals to progress monitor each year so we can get to the 60 by 30 goal for Texas. So within the progress monitoring, we had to add plans for each campus that are aligned to the board outcome goals and progress measures. Says recommended in this PowerPoint, but everything that's on here, because this is straight from TEA that says recommended, we, we are doing. Campus plans are predictive of the board outcome goals and progress measures. Plans and goals should be influenceable by the superintendent. Ms. Sanford has reviewed these. And she's looked also at our campus progress monitoring and our campus data, and she'll be a, a part of the ongoing process. Establish and adopt a monitoring calendar and a multi-year schedule that describes the months during which interim updates on goals and plans, progress measures are reported to the board. So you will get those updates as well. And the school board must review the progress of each plan at least annually at a public meeting. So later on in the presentation, you will, we will be presenting the data along with the district progress monitoring. So you'll see that as well. But for now, Lisa Minton is going to come up and she's going to give you the HB3 key points. And then she's going to go into the CCMR plan and the CCMR board goals. And then I'll be back up to give the literacy and the math.
Good evening, everyone. We're kind of playing tag team here on this. But there's a lot of information and, um, definitely somebody else needs to do early childhood literacy than me, so. Okay. So, uh, quickly, before we start looking at the data that we have available for you, we wanted to give you the key points of the House Bill Three goals. So the state sets the target goals that are to be met within each student group. And these vary according to the state data. So we don't get to set the original, uh, goal that we want to, um, rise up from. Um, that's set by the state in the data on the taper report. Data sources were taken from the Domain One Student Achievement Data and Domain Three Closing the Gaps. And this was all from the taper report from the 2018-19 student, um, taper report. And based on the student groups that were identified in closing the gaps in Domain Three. So this is what we call lagging data because it's not last year's data for us to use. It is 1819's data. So one of the major key points for House Bill Three is that the, uh, our ISD board must adopt three district goals. The CCMR goal plus a detailed plan to support the goal, uh, early childhood literacy goal and early childhood math goal. All campus goals are aligned to support the House Bill Three district goals in each area, just as Lynn explained. This report is a five-year plan that sets up district goals. So when you see the dates on here, the five years started with 2020. Okay? So you'll see five years based on 2020 as the starting year. All right? These goals again are based on the state plan for the 60 by 30 in Texas. And again, uh, this means that all students will, will meet the 60% goals in third grade reading and math uh, in the STAR, as well as 60% of all high school seniors graduate without the need for remediation and either have an industry-based certification uh, or enroll in a post-secondary education or enroll in the military. Have an update about the military. So just recently, you know, TA, they love to make changes. Uh, TA recently advised districts that they are currently not including military enlistments reported by districts and are waiting on a, an agreement document with the Department of Defense, um, to use their numbers because they believe they are more accurate in their count. So starting this year, there will not be military numbers included in the CCMR, which Jim stands for military. So this is going to be really interesting. Okay? Okay. So again, um, because this is the first phase of meeting the 60 by 30 goal by 2030. Um, this 60% does not need to be attained until 2030. So the, uh, this presentation, um, the goals were set, uh, to be reasonably met and took into consideration mitigating factors that have been going on in our life. Okay? So some of those are summer slide, the learning slide from COVID-19. No available state assessment data for 1920 because we didn't take the STAR test last year. Uh, multiple changes in the learning set, settings, moving back and forth from virtual to face-to-face. Because as we all know, that, that has affected some students in how they are learning and progressing in their education. Any questions before I move on about any of that? Okay? Well, let's dive in. Okay. So the first goal you have here is the district, um, goal for overall CCMR readiness. Okay? Currently, based on the taper 2018-19 report, our goal, uh, we met, uh, the goal at 67%. I will tell you that was above the state percentage rate. Okay? So we're doing a good job. But obviously, we don't want to stop there. The 67% is not where we want to be. Okay? So you can see the data there from 2020. And again, remember, this, these goals were set to start for the five years in 2020. So that's why you see from 2020 to 2024. Okay? So the student groups that you see down below that actually have percentages in them for growth are the groups from the closing the gaps domain that we need to address here in Red Oak ISD. Okay? And these are based on annual graduates. Now that's a little different. So a cohort graduate group is a group of students who all started ninth grade at the same time and all going to go graduate in 2020 at the same time. Okay? Annual graduates are students who graduate in 2020 and your 12th graders who did not graduate. So those, that is the graduate number that they're using. So it's not a cohort group. It's annual graduate group. So it's a little bit different. And they have a way complex formula for that one. Let me just tell you. Okay? So you can see that we, um, have a goal here of 80% by 2024. Okay? And then have, um, set those, um, goals every year. Because of COVID, we did not feel it was appropriate to try to raise the goal for 2020 because we didn't know what was going to happen and where we were going to be right now. So, uh, any questions on the CCMR overall readiness goal? And again, remember, the baseline data is coming from, um, 2819 for the percentages. But to start off with, I wanted to add this reminder. They did look at the numbers from 2016-17 first. So it's kind of a combination of those two school years. Okay, I'm going to move on. All right. Moving on. Okay. So now we come into the CCMR district camp, campus progress majors. Now these progress majors are based on, originally based on 1617 data. And these progress measures are what determine our CCMR outcomes bonus money. Okay? Which last year was the first year that we received any type of bonus money. And that money was based on 1617. And this year's bonus money was ma, was based on 1617. But the projections are based on the 2018-19 taper data. Okay? I know, it gets a little confusing. Uh, so the first chart here, that's the progress measure one, is solely based on students that are classified economically disadvantaged. Okay? So this data is on students who are identified as economically disadvantaged, no matter what student group they might belong to. Whether that would be an ESL learner or a special ed learner or any other type of learner in that group. Okay? Uh, we earn a bonus with students in this particular group who have met the CCMR readiness standards at the 11% mark. So at 12% of students in this economically disadvantaged group who have earned the career college military readiness standards, we would, we would earn a bonus starting at that 12% mark. Okay? Uh, I can tell you, we earn, or the state gives us $5,000 per student out of this group for a bonus. Okay? On the CCMR progress measure two, those are your, not, only for the non-economically disadvantaged student group. So students who are not economically disadvantaged are non-economically disadvantaged. And again, this includes any stu, any student who is, whether they are ESL, SPED, or whatever student group they belong to. Okay? And we start earning a bonus with these students in this group once they have met the CCMR readiness standards at the 24% top level. And at that level, each student above that earns us a $3,000 a student bonus. The second project, pro, progress measure, sorry, is all about special populations. Okay? And so those students, the state has determined, do not have to have a certain percentage for a cut on that. Any student in the special populations group that earns CCMR readiness standards automatically qualifies for bonus money. Okay? So for every student in this particular student population earns us a $2,000 bonus. Okay? So you've probably figured out that special populations, you can actually count them in two groups. You can count them in both the special populations group and the economically, economically disadvantaged if they are in that group as well. Or you could count them in the special populations and the non-economically disadvantaged group. It depends on which of those two other groups they would also fall into. Questions on the progress measures? Okay? Okay, so next I want to present you with the CCMR plan. And I believe you have a copy of this in your packet there. Um, first of all, uh, this plan was not the sole thought of myself. Okay? This was a combined effort, uh, from, uh, members of the CNI department. Heidi Britton, Rachel Little, and myself. And then from the high school campus, Melissa Fisher. Okay? Uh, just some key pieces I want to call to your attention. So under the college-ready criteria and the career and/or military-ready criteria, there were changes made to those criteria standards uh, in November of this year. So there are some new standards now for us to meet for college readiness and career readiness. And let's not forget that they're not going to count military now. Okay? So just calling your attention to that, that those are updated and new. Okay? Then we gave you the, uh, list of opportunities that we have available to students to earn our CCMR readiness standards. And we have several ways in which students can accomplish that. On the second page, um, I included the new TSIA II data because that is the new test that will go into effect in January of 2021. And, um, the biggest highlight here for this is this actually gives students a second opportunity on the math portion of that test to qualify for CCMR by offering them a diagnostic level which, which they can qualify if their score does not meet the 950 in math. So it's just another way for our students to qualify for CCMR at that point. We included points on how students can earn college credit, um, the guidelines for dual credit here at Red Oak ISD. And then we gave you different success measures, evaluation tools, and key strategies on how, on how to help our students be college, career, and military-ready, as well as to help improve our attendance rates. So any questions on the CCMR plan to help support our goals?
No, and there it is. So with them taking military readiness out, how do, I guess, I, I, I'm seeing the data and I'm seeing everything coming through in this projected. But if they pull military readiness out, how do you, how do you figure percentages?
Oh, that's a really good question, Mr. Knight. And I'm waiting for TA to decide how they're going to do that. Um, I think really in the grand scheme of it all, it's not going to be that many percentage points. Um, I could be wrong, certainly. Um, I think they're going to find when they actually do get the data from the Department of Defense that we're not as inaccurate as they'd like for us to be. And so I think overall, it'll be a change in the process more than a loss of percentage points. Now, how that's going to figure in for next year until they get that all in place, I really didn't know. They have not said that they're going to deduct a certain percentage from school districts or they're going to give you a new formula to use. They haven't stated any of that. They just came out and said they weren't going to count that for this year. So I wish I could answer that question better for you.
No, I, like I said, I was just, I was just trying to wrap my brain around it.
Yeah, I am too.
Okay, well, we're in it together.
Yeah, absolutely. As I said, TA likes to make a lot of changes. They'd always, you know, they never like to give you all the information upfront because that'd be too easy, right? So. Any other questions that you might have? Okay, well, I'm going to turn this back over to Lynn Dockery because she certainly knows more about early childhood literacy than I do. Thank you all very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
All right. So on to HB3, early childhood. So basically, the format is going to look pretty much the same as CCMR did. Just know that what we brought you guys tonight are the district goals. And each one of our campuses have set their own goals as well. So each one of our elementary school campuses has this same template where they have set their goals according to what HB3 says and according to what the district, what our templates say as well. And with their own data, because their own data might, is going to... to look very different than the district data. The good thing about the CCMR goal is that we have one high school. So whatever the district data is, the high school data is that same data as well. All right, so with our early childhood literacy goal, we use the 2020 data as a baseline. I'm sorry, the 2019 STAR data as baseline. It's from, obviously, the third grade reading STAR test. So we use that as our 2020 baseline, but it's from the 2019 STAR test. And so by the end of 2024, which is that five-year goal that Lisa talked about, if you look at our baseline data from 2019, we had forty percent of our third grade students at the MEETS performance level. So by 2025, we're looking at fifty percent. Now, know that we have still five more years to hit that sixty by thirty. So our final goal is the sixty percent. But we're also taking into consideration the circumstances like Lisa talked about. The circumstances of not only the summer slide, but COVID. And we're hoping that we don't see, hope is not a strategy, but in planning, we're planning to look at data very closely, so if we see our percentages go back, we have a plan for how to move forward from there. So we tried to take all of that into consideration when we even looked at increasing percentages. And then you'll see for our third grade data below, that is broken down into each one of the student populations. So these are the student populations that were identified in the 2018, 19 TAPER report. And we took the percentages as baseline, same as we did with the total district goal, and we increased them incrementally to reach that 2024, and we tried to make them as attainable as possible. That's one of the things that we know when we set goals, we have to try to make them as attainable as possible and not impossible. All right, so let's move on. This is the early childhood literacy district, the progress measures. And I apologize, I did make a change. If you see, there's three different progress measures here. I thought it would change on our Google Doc, but it did not. And I see that our progress measure three has the math piece in it, but I'll talk you through that piece because I have that in my presentation. So if you look at the progress measures, what the state is saying that we have to do is look at pre-K numbers, look at kindergarten numbers, look at first and second grade data as well. Because what do we know about third grade? We know that it doesn't just start in third grade. We know that we have to have a really strong early childhood program. So when we look at progress measure number one, all of that data is using the pre-K assessment, which is the CIRCLE assessment. It's a state-released assessment that this state suggests that we use for looking at literacy and looking at math. If you look at progress measure number two, that is kindergarten. And what we use for kindergarten is the TPRI. And the TPRI is the Texas Primary Reading Inventory. And so we use that to look at our measures for literacy, same with first grade and second grade. And so the progress measure number three is actually our first and second graders. We do have, and I can get you this slide, because the slide for our progress measure number three and our progress measure number two, you can see that it also includes our bilingual students. So it's not just broken down into our English-speaking students, it's broken down into our bilingual students. And then each one of those is also broken down into our student groups. And I would certainly be glad to get you that progress measure three slide. Any questions on early childhood literacy, the goal or any of the progress measures? Okay, then we'll move on to early childhood math. So same thing, our data, the 2020 data that is in here is taken from the 2019 third grade STAR test. So we started with our third graders because that's actually the board goal that we're setting. And the same thing, so if you look at 2020, forty-two percent of our third grade students scored at the performance level of MEETS. And so we set increment, once again, we set those incremental goals to 2024 to meet fifty-two percent, and then we have another five years to meet that sixty by thirty, that sixty percent. And then same thing with math, it's also broken down into student groups. And then if you go on to the progress measures, so the progress measures are broken down the same way that the literacy goals are, the literacy progress measures are. We look at pre-K, which we're using CIRCLE, again, because our CIRCLE assessment does literacy and math for our pre-K students. If you look at progress measure two, that's our kinder students, and we use what's called the Math Assessment Project. It's a MAP program. It's a diagnostic that we use to see where our kids are according to their grade level. And then progress measure three, we also use MAP for our second and third graders because unfortunately, we don't have an apples-to-apples assessment, because our pre-K through second grade students don't take a STAR test. So the assessments that we're using aren't apples-to-apples, but they're also assessments that the state has suggested that we use. So if the state suggests we use it, we're assuming that they are making a pretty good alignment to the STAR. Any questions on the early childhood math progress measures or the board goal? We are going to continue to monitor all of this. We give six weeks' assessments. We also give benchmarks, so we're able to look at our second and third grade students and up pretty closely. Our pre-K and kinder and first grade students get TPRI beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. So we're able to look at that, not just at the end of the year, but we're able to look at all of that data throughout the year. They also give MAP assessments, which is the math portion, throughout the year and as students need that. So we're continuing to monitor the data all throughout the year, not just in a one snapshot piece.
Ms. Dockery?
Yes, sir.
So do we have access to see how we are measuring up against other districts across Texas to see where we're at as far as currently where we are at attainment as far as a starting point? So we can know competitively what we're up against and where we need to raise our own bar?
Yes, so we can look at districts that are similar to ours in size, student population. That's all available through TAPER reports. So we are able to look at that information and see.
I'd be really interested to see that, how we're today, where we're at today, and how we measure going forward.
Okay, great. We can look at that and put that together and look at some comparable districts as to Red Oak and, yeah, and track that.
Awesome. Thank you.
And just for anyone that wants to, it's all out there on the public. You can go to txschools.gov. And if you're a data nerd and love to dig in the data, you know, that's one of my favorite things to go into. You can actually put in any school district that you want, and you can pull all their current data too. And you can see graphs and everything on there. So that's a good one, just for anybody that wants to get out there and look at it, it's txschools.gov.
And it gives a good overview of the accountability system. It's very easy to read and look at.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. A lot of good information. Appreciate the curriculum department putting all that together.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the House Bill three goals? Anyone?
Make a, get this out of the way so you can. I make a motion that we adopt the goals of the House Bill three as presented by the staff.
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Mr. Knight and a second by Mr. Sebring. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, we have the consideration and approval of resolution of candidate nomination for the Ellis County Appraisal District Board of Directors vacancy. Ms. Sander?
Yes, you will see in your packet that that is a vacancy that is open. If anyone has someone that they would like to be considered and approved to be a nominee on that, we can do a nomination, or if there is no board action, that there is not a nomination that you can choose to do and no board action.
At this time, I make a motion that the board take no action on the resolution of the candidate nomination for the Ellis Appraisal District Board of Directors vacancy.
Second motion.
Okay, that is Mr. Sebring with the motion and Mr. Knight with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries five zero. Okay, next we have consideration and approval of School Health Advisory Council for the 2020, 21 school year. Ms. Sue Brown?
Hi, good evening. Today, I'm here as the district liaison for the School Health Advisory Council, or what I refer to as SHAC. And SHAC is a group appointed by the school board, and members come from different areas in our community. We like to have the majority, and it's supposed to be a parent-led group. We have community members, we have a physician that's on our group, we have members from the district also that are part of this program. And our aim is to have a parent representative from each school. You'll notice, though, that there are two open positions from two schools that we have not been able to get a representative. But we're working on that. And in addition, we'd also like to have a school board member to be a member of the committee too. And at some point, it's been a number of years since we've had a school board member on the committee. But we're an advisory group for the district, and we make recommendations to the decision-makers for programs related to coordinated health and impact on student health and learning. We're interested in creating a healthy school environment for our students and also for our staff. And it exists to ensure that local values are reflected in the health education that we're doing in our district. Now, last year, our plans were altered by COVID as the world, and we were going to provide for our staff members a mobile imaging, an ultrasound program that would come to the schools and be able, the staff could during their planning period or off-period or after-school have the ultrasounds. But we were unable to do that with the closing of the district, and we can't do it this year because we are not bringing people onto our local campuses. But it's something that we're considering and would like to have in the future. We did last year get Aim for Success to come in and do a puberty program for our fifth grade students. We've always done puberty training in fourth grade and fifth by the nursing staff. But Aim for Success offered to us last year a pre-program, and they came, it was well-received. The teachers enjoyed it, the students were involved, it's an interactive program, and it seemed to be well-received. We had parent meetings so that they could come and see the program, and it was all very positive response. This year, we've had two Zoom meetings so far. We're kind of researching into mental health programs that we have in the district currently and any areas for need for our students or needs for the future. Several bills passed in the last legislative sessions related to mental health, so that is a big area that the state is looking at. So we're trying to see how we can improve on our programs. And we do have Andrea Jones. You'll see that she is a crisis counselor at the high school, and she's on our committee this year, and she's been a wealth of knowledge for what is currently available. We're also going to be doing a school health index, which is a questionnaire, and it shows us areas of need. We're hoping to see where our strengths are and where are areas that need improvement. And it is something that we look at nutrition, physical activities, social and emotional climate of the schools, school health services, staff wellness is another area, and family and community involvement. Several of us on the SHAC committee are going to be doing that questionnaire and bringing that information forward. This year was also going to be a school and safety fair, but that has been postponed again because of COVID. But we have these plans to continue on in the future. We know things are going to improve. And you have before you in the packet names of the people recommended to serve on the council for the 2021 year, and that is there for your approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So when you, on the open positions, I'm assuming when someone comes available, let's put it that way?
What we have done is gone to the PTAs at each of the schools and requested if they could find someone to fill the positions. Unfortunately, one of our schools does not have a PTA that's functioning right now. And then the other school, we have not had success. We're still working at trying to get in touch with the people at that school to see if someone would be willing to step forward and help, because it is supposed to be majority parents. And now on your list, you do have some members that's listed as community, but they're also parents for students.
Which campuses are missing?
Right now, it is Chapman and Red Oak Elementary.
And how does your school board member become a member of SHAC?
Well, I don't know. I guess it would be, if you were, if anyone that would be interested, I guess you'd just ask to be elected or added to this list. We'd love for anyone to come on board.
Promise and be added to the list.
Can you have more than one?
Certainly. As long as we have a majority of parents involved, and I think we still would.
Well, I want to make sure the parents are involved first. I think that's where, when you dive down into it, you know, the parents really need to be involved.
Right. I agree.
And that's where I prefer to see the majority of it from. But, you know, we know sometimes it's tough, you know, getting parents involved. But I've liked, I mean, looking at what I'm seeing right now, the parents that are involved, that's fantastic. And everyone that's on there involved, you know, that's a great thing. But, yeah, it's later on, it's possibly, you know, to look, but, you know, I don't want to overwhelm either, put it that way, you know, for more than one school. At this time, I recommend the approval of the committee members.
Thank you.
Second. I had one other question. What is the time commitment for parents for meetings and stuff?
It's very limited. We're required to have four meetings a year. And this year, we're doing Zoom meetings because we can't meet in person. Our meetings are usually an hour. Now, on years that we have heavy projects like the Health and Safety Fair, we might, we'd add like maybe three or four extra meetings, however many we needed to, to get the goal accomplished. But on normal years, it's usually four meetings.
Gotcha. On these vacancies that you don't have filled, if somebody doesn't come available from ROE, are we going, are y'all going to look to accept another parent? Or are we limited to what these slots that are here currently?
I think we could probably amend this list at any time.
I just, I know that we all know somebody in there.
I just, I know that we, we all know somebody, then there are people in the community that certainly, um, we know that would, could step up and could commit to four or five meetings, uh, a year.
Year.
That, that's worth their time and, and their opinions and their weights and their fields of expertise could certainly contribute to this team.
We'd appreciate it.
Okay, I'll push some people to you.
The meetings, um, you said, I realize it's only a few times a year, but this is the answer that we get so much. Are they during like the day when people are at work? Or are they after work hours?
Our meetings are six o'clock in the evening now. And we can adjust that to seven if we need to. We kind of vary by the members that are on the committee and when they're available. Um, and if they're available at six, then that's usually what we prefer so that there's more time at home for them.
The majority of people that I know anyway get, do get off work at five or 5:30, somewhere around there. But I, I do hear that from the communities that they, they would like to do certain things or be more involved. However, things start at four o'clock in the afternoon and they can't take off work for it.
Yes, and we're flexible with that. Our next meeting is February 2nd, so.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion to approve the list by Mr. Knight and a second by Mr. Sebring. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
I'd just like to also say thank you, Sue, and all the nursing staff. They have worked extremely, extremely hard, um, through this COVID situation. So just to recognize you and your, the other nurses, we appreciate you so much. Appreciate you.
Next, we have the amended 2020-2021 school year calendar. Ms. Sanford?
Okay, uh, you have a copy of that calendar that is on the screen and also in your, um, packet as well. And what we're looking at doing is, um, we have a lot of staff development days that we had built into the calendar in order to, um, if we did have to do some type of COVID shutdown or for reading academies, different things that we had anticipated occurring. And then, um, with those days being built in, we all know that, um, the teachers need some extra planning time. They are, um, extremely stressed. They have a lot on their plate, uh, teaching virtually and in school. And so we looked at how we could actually adapt this calendar to allow them some at-home planning time or some in-school planning time instead of actually having just, um, staff development that we're bringing in for them. And we also looked at some days that we had as, um, for example, Friday would have been an early release day, December the 18th. But instead of making that an early release day, what we have recommended on this calendar is the students will not be coming that day. Instead, it will be a staff development day that gives those teachers a full day in which they could actually do some planning. Uh, another, um, change would be on January the 5th, we had that as a student makeup day. And we're going to actually turn that into a regular school day that helps us to go ahead and get, grab some of those minutes that we're losing throughout the calendar that we're turning into staff development days. Uh, Monday, March the 29th was a student makeup day, and we are turning that into a staff development day. Monday, April the 19th was a student makeup day. We're turning that into a staff development day. Friday, May the 14th was a regular school day. We're turning that into a staff development day. And then on Friday, May 28th was an early release, and that will be a staff development day. Again, it works with our minutes that is required for us to have. We will not have to make up time at the end of the school year, but it does allow those teachers, um, several days throughout the year, at least one per month that they can actually have, that they can plan and spend time getting ready for those virtual lessons and those in, in-school lessons. So that is the recommendation that the board accept as adjustments and amendments to the calendar. Any questions?
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the amendments?
Second.
Okay, that's a motion by Ms. Story and a second by Mr. Sebring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. You have in your packets, um, in, all the information items. Are there any questions or anything that you would like to bring up on any of those? Ms. Sanford, is there anything you have to add?
I believe I highlighted most of those at the beginning during the superintendent's report, so I have nothing further to add on that.
Okay, then if there is nothing else.
Before we do, I just, I just want to say, you know, I know the COVID has affected everyone, you know, our teachers, our staff, e- everyone involved. And I know there's been a lot of time put in, you know, um, you know, I hear it, some, some of the teachers. They are, they're, they're, it's time for Christmas break to get them some rejuvenated a little bit. But I tell you what, I know I truly appreciate them. And I truly appreciate, you know, our teachers, our staff, everyone that's involved. It's been very difficult, you know, for, for the, our community overall. But to see the way our teachers shine, the way everybody else shines, it's, it's amazing. And I just, my hat's off to everyone, I'd say that.
They are definitely our true heroes. They are, they're on the front line.
Okay, if we don't have anything else, the time is 8:18 PM, and the board will adjourn into closed session pursuant to multiple Texas government codes as listed on the agenda.